Check, check. All right, welcome back. We had some technical difficulties, but we will continue where we left off. We had just gone over the Radham Public Hearing Item 6A. And I will get Director to give us a little.
Synopsis?
Yes, please.
Be happy to. Thank you. Mireia Turner, Community Development Director. You have before you today two of the instruments or documents going before the Board. For those who are just joining us, after the August 8th Planning Commission meeting, I did find a number of typographical errors. And so, most of them were just formatting or misspells or verb tense. But what you have before you today were two that actually warranted your attention. The first one is a resolution adopting an amendment to the Lake County General Plan and Middletown Area Plan for the Guanac Valley Mixed-Use Plan Development Project. The typographical error that was located in this document was changing a land use designation, which is a general plan designation, to a zoning district designation, which is a separate and distinct map. So the correction before you, or the amendment, is changing the existing land use designations, rural lands, agriculture, I think some rural residential, and possibly some resource conservation, into commercial resort, which is another land use designation in the general plan. The second you have before you is an ordinance establishing regulations and development standards for the Guanac Valley Zoning District, or the GVD District. This document was included when the Planning Commission made a recommendation of approval for the general plan amendment rezone, general plan of development, specific plan of development and development agreement, which did include the -- looking for it, looking for it. Include the details of the development was within that motion. And in fact, during the Planning Commission discussion, the Planning Commission discussed this, the district guidelines accurately. They were presented to you accurately. But however, since the document itself had some errors in it, that's why this one is before you today as well. And because the motion was not specifically detailing what would have been correctly described in this document, that is before you. So going over that one. In the document that went before you. Sorry. My child. Apparently, I forgot to turn my ringer off. The previous document listed temporary events as one of the uses permitted, but this was -- in the corrected document, this is removed because temporary events require zoning permits. And the wording that already existed describing the zoning permits as those allowed in those certain districts would encompass and include zoning permits. So it didn't need to be specifically stated. So that would be removed. Secondly, under the development standards for covenants, conditions, and restrictions, or CCNRs, listed that final approval of these CCNRs would be with County Council and Community Development Director. And those are not, nor have they ever actually been, under our purview. So a correction was made to that, to strike that sentence, but also to specify that recordation is required for these CCNRs prior to, I think, any escrows. Next one, resource conservation combining district. This was a typographical error. It shouldn't have been listed as resource conservation. It should have been listed as open space conservation, which is how you will see it in the zoning map. So no change to where those were applied, just a change to the term. And then Section 5 incorrectly said that we would publish a complete ordinance after its approval, where for the last probably 10 to 12 years, because state law updated it, allowing us to publish just a summary rather than the ordinance in its entirety. We just had to word it differently so that we can save ourselves a few hundred dollars in Record B and publish a summary of the ordinance with the full ordinance still available for public review in the Clerk of the Board's office. So again, this does not address any of the recommendations or actions taken by the Planning Commission on its August 8th meeting. It's simply amending to correct these two documents in a number of places. So staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the amendments in two steps per document, and those are listed out in the sample motion.
So I just have just a couple of questions. Just to clarify, and I asked prior to the meeting, the document that is called Lotus Investment Holding Incorporated Draft Conditions of Approval that we received at our last meeting has been amended. And we haven't seen that. I don't know that we need to, but there were just, there were some things that needed to be removed from that particular document, is my understanding.
Yes, and I'm happy to address that. They were amended two different ways, or the conditions of approval that the Planning Commission approved on August 8th were amended two different ways. One was the addition of the wording that was specific to the drillings of any additional wells. That was in your July 24th meeting where we reached consensus for that one. The second one was the striking of all the conditions that were directly related to cannabis permits, which of course is not part of this project description and should have been struck prior to you seeing this document. Those are the amendments from the conditions of approval, neither of which required coming back to the Planning Commission for further review and approval, so they are just amended.
Okay. It was unfortunate that the performance review was not allowed. That seemed like a really nice idea, but anyway. So thank you for that clarification.
Performance review is included in Article 27 as a requirement for cannabis permits.
Right, I understand that.
That will be stricken from their conditions.
Okay. Thank you for that. Can I ask any questions about the two documents before we go for a vote? Okay. Some of them are just sort of clarifications for, probably maybe just for me only, but this is a brand-new process, and so as I read through it, I just had some wonderments and just some ahas. One was on the resolution that the general plan shall be amended no more than four times during any calendar year.
Correct. That is by state law.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, we haven't had a lot of general plan amendments coming before this commission in the last, I don't know what, eight, 10 years. But, so should we start seeing a number of those again? That's when the departments will start maybe grouping them together for the purpose of getting them on one general plan amendment, because we only do have four allowed per year.
What caught my eye is that we're working on the new general plan. I thought, oh, I just thought that was interesting. The other thing on that same document that I just had a wonderment about the wording was on five, on the second page, it says, "All individuals, groups, and agencies desiring to comment were given adequate opportunity to submit oral written comments on the Guanac Valley Use Plan." I just wondered if we should say adequate. That seems so subjective, and I wondered if that gets us in any trouble if somebody says, "I didn't have adequate time or adequate amount of opportunity." If someone was unhappy with the outcome, I just didn't know if that opened us up. I just.
I appreciate that question. We are able to substantiate adequacy in the numerous public meetings that we've had, the noticed public hearings we've had, the public review periods for the SEQA documents. We've had a number of advertised periods for public input.
Okay. If that can be quantified, I have no problem. I just thought, uh-oh, I guess in trouble.
We do tend to avoid subjective terminology unless we can support it. Yeah. But I appreciate you being, you know, on the lookout for that.
Thank you. I had a question, a couple of questions, maybe just again, clarifications on the ordinance on Page 2. And this is just a wonderment for probably process. There was one of the issues for mitigation for this project was being agricultural swap of, I think, 325 acres, and it makes notice of, you know, protect agricultural use, sensitive wetlands, et cetera. I just wondered, and I don't think it was clarified, at least not in my mind, when does that happen? Where does that happen? Who or what group or agency makes sure it does happen?
Your mentioning of litigation threw me off a little bit.
No, no, no. It just, it says to protect agricultural uses.
This is on Page 2?
Page 2 of the ordinance.
Ah, yes, I see it.
Yeah, and it just, where does that process happen? Who oversees it? And who says, yes, it's been done? Because there was a lot of conversation about that.
Sure.
And I just, I just didn't know.
So that takes place in a variety of different ways, where this is one of the wherethes, you could say. It's one of the purposes of the document. And so, to protect agricultural uses, to sensitive wetlands, riparian habitat areas, we'll see a lot of that in the rezone within that open space conservation district area. Additionally, when they come in for subdivision maps, we'll be looking at wetlands, riparian areas. When they come in for building permits, we'll also still be reviewing and protecting those sensitive receptors, those riparian corridors, watercourses, things like that, with our zoning code that does specify in the floodway fringe, the floodway, the wetlands, we have setbacks from those areas. And those zoning overlays are not going away with the addition of the Guanac Valley District Zoning District. Those overlays will remain.
Good, thank you. But this was a very specific 325. What you just described is a more global. This was a very specific chunk.
I think you're mentioning the area that was recognized to be lost in primex soils in the SEQA. I'll defer to Michelle Iris, our senior.
Yeah, so I was just wondering how that happens, when it happens, who does it, and will somebody come back and say, it's done, and here's where it happened?
I can answer as far as the timing. Mitigation Measure 3.2-2 notes the timing of that one prior to submittal of the final maps and requires the applicant to provide proof of that recordation and submittal with submittal of the final maps. And that would be for the conservation easements, deed restrictions, or other form of long-term permanent protection.
And will that come back to us? Or does that come back just?
The subdivision maps will come to you in a future data tentative subdivision maps, and then ensuring that all conditions have been met is a team effort with staff prior to the county surveyor taking the final maps to the Board for recordation.
Okay.
I also can see peripherally here that a member of the applicant team has their hand up. I don't know if they're able to answer that.
We do have Ryan and Annalee from Acorn Environmental here also.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
If, who are we going to get to speak? Who has their hand up again? Ryan Sawyer, if you could answer that question, or if you have any information for that, you can state your first and last name for the record, and you can speak.
Great, yes. Hello, this is Ryan Sawyer with Acorn Environmental. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here. I just wanted to clarify that as it relates to the Guanac Valley Zoning District and how it may be protective of agricultural resources, that there is a map that accompanies the zoning district. I think it should have been in your original packet from July 24th. And that map includes an agricultural preserve combining district that shows areas within the project site that would be subject to these agricultural protections. Now, those areas don't necessarily overlap with the agricultural conservation easement that is committed to in the mitigation measures, but certainly, and I think you heard the applicant describe this in the prior hearing, that conservation easements could be recorded on these agricultural preserve combining district areas to meet the mitigation requirements. But even without that, without an amendment to the current underlying zoning, these agricultural preserve combining districts would be protective of agricultural resources. And so, I just wanted to speak to the Planning Commissioner's question about how does this zoning district itself, how is it protective of agricultural resources and meet that goal? So I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you. I was just looking for that specific thing, because we had quite a bit of conversation about that it has to be mitigated within no less than 100 miles of the project. And the discussion was that it could probably be easily mitigated within 16,000 acres. My wonderment is, where will we see that very specific 325 acres? It was here. Where's it going to be over, or is it going to be over here? That very specific thing. I understand, appreciate the global conversation about the conservation, but that was a very specific thing in the reports. And it may have been you, Ryan, or one of the other folks from Acorn, who mentioned the 100 acre, excuse me, the 100-mile radius that it could be possibly mitigated. So my wonderment is, where's it going to be mitigated? When does it happen? And who reports back to us that it's been taken care of? Because it was noted and called out in a very specific way.
Got it, understood. Am I still unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yes, so the current mitigation requires that the agricultural conservation easements be recorded and verified by the county prior to the submittal of the final maps. So proof of the recordation of conservation easements must be submitted with the final maps.
I would be happy to report to this commission when that is done.
Thank you very much. Okay. Then just another just clarification for me, again, on Page 2, where it talks about market-driven development. Does that mean that if the market atmosphere changes, that the, and that the applicants would like to change their project, does that mean that it comes back to us?
No. That just means that they have a development agreement that allows for these phases to have sort of softer timelines, taking into account the market at that time.
Oh, okay. All righty. Thank you.
And Ryan, feel free to jump in and correct me if I am mistaken.
That sounds correct to me. Thanks, Mireia.
One other thing that I noted, under, on 3, use permits, there are A through E possible permits for possible activities on this property. And D says, "One foster home or small family home, family care home, supportive housing." Is that just the, per the, just per the code?
That is standard language required by state law.
Okay. Because I read that, I thought, oh, I don't remember talking about that. Okay.
What page were you on?
That was, that's Page 4. And on Page 9, it says, "External access. Planning Commission shall review development applications to ensure that projected traffic increase resulting from the project when partially and fully implemented will not significantly impact the connecting streets, roads, existing," et cetera, et cetera. I just was concerned about the language that we are going to ensure, we, the Planning Commission is going to ensure that the projected traffic increases will be, that we ensure that they're going to be all tended to. So I was just concerned, us making a commitment to something that we probably are not going to have any control over.
Before anything would come to the Planning Commission, it would first have to come through an application that's vetted by multiple agencies and departments. We won't just bring something to you and be like, here. You know, it would be in a similar manner to how we normally process permits, which is to give you all of the information that you need in order to make your decisions.
Okay. Thank you. And I think I had my question on 11 already answered about the luxury resort standards. Thank you for that. And just to point out, on Page 13, Article 51, it outlines the scope of what the Planning Commission options are for, I guess, any project, as well as this project. I thought that was interesting to have that just enumerated out.
This is standard language within our plan development articles, talking about the process, due process rights.
Right, and that the Planning Commission can approve, disapprove, or modify used permits for specific planning development in any manner, best for the interest of the general authority of the county. So we can approve, disapprove, or modify, so.
Indeed, as is the case with all of our discretionary permits.
Just to remind us.
You have power.
All right, thank you for answering my questions. That helps me just to understand the process a little better.
I just have one quick question. Reading through this, as I understand it, that these changes that are before us today apply primarily to the Guanac Valley, to the areas of the project that are happening and occurring at the Guanac Valley site. Is that correct?
Correct. This does not include any off-site parts of the project.
Thank you.
Approving these would in no way change your previous action regarding the rezone of the Santa Clara Housing Site, just to be specific.
Are there any further questions from the commission? If no more questions, then I think I'm just waiting for motions.
If you'd like to open it to public input?
Oh, yeah. Forgot about that one. So I'll be opening up public input, where any person of the public can speak for three minutes, state your first and last name. Anyone on Zoom? No hands on Zoom?
Wasn't sure if I should have come today, because I didn't know if it was going to be necessary, but there was a key point.
Could you just state your first and last name for the record?
Sorry. Name's Charles Morse. There was a key point that was brought up that does affect the agriculture and quote-unquote the switching of the lands. Under the Sacramento Superior Court Case 515766, it dates back to about 1996, and in that, there's very specific rules for commercial properties and agricultural properties. And to go ahead and flip that over, it's going to have a real effect on the environment and water. And so, I don't know if anybody's done the due diligence on that, but putting a horse before the cart and not looking at it seems to me to be something that is there. And it's such a fragile area, because that's basically the last area where all the water from the entire basin enters Lake Berriessa. That's all I got.
What was, what ruling are you referring to?
I'm talking about the.
You gave a number.
I'm talking about the Pewter Creek ruling. You know about it. In our math bylaws, we just basically, excuse me, in our math plan, we hint about this rule, but we don't actually specifically say it. But it was actually something that was negotiated with Solano County by Supervisor Helen Whitney back in the 90s. And none of the documentation, none of the agreements was prepared for something this massive, $125 million project, right there in the middle of the basin. So it's a big deal. And it's not an easily enforceable thing to do, because it really does expect us to be good stewards of the water and the land. And I'm sure there is abuses. I, you know, I personally am part of that whole thing, and I try to police myself and ask my neighbors to do the same. But this is going to be the biggest neighbor that we've ever had in our area. So that's all I got.
Thank you for your comment. Another look in the Zoom room. No hands in the Zoom room. And we only had one person here in chamber, so I'm going to close public input and bring it back to the commission for action.
Chair, I am prepared to make, to read the motions, if we're ready. I move to amend the recommendation with the corrections as described in the staff memo dated August 18, 2025.
A second.
We got a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, and then one absent. The motion passes.
Second motion, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors of the resolution adopting an amendment to the Lake County General Plan and the Middletown Area Plan, GPAP 24-01, for the Guanac Valley Mixed-Use Plan Development Project as amended.
Second.
We got a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four ayes and one absent. The motion passes.
In regard to the ordinance establishing regulations and development standards for the Guanac Valley Zoning District, or GVD District, I move to amend the recommendation with the corrections as described in the staff memo dated August 18, 2025.
Second.
Motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four ayes, zero nays, and one absent. Motion passes.
And the second motion related to that, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors of an ordinance establishing regulations and development standards for the Guanac Valley Zoning District, or GVD District, as amended.
Second.
Motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four ayes, zero noes, and one absent. The motion passes.
Okay. Now, we have a couple of motions in regard to the recommended actions.
It's actually a duplicate for the purpose of the coding of the agenda. I think if you did those first four, you're good.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering about that. That's a question I should have asked before. Thanks. Okay, so I think we're good then.
Thank you.
I believe that's all the motions we had for today for Item 6A. Moving on to non-timed items. Moving on to non-timed items.
We have no non-timed items today.
Department update?
There is no department update today.
And that leaves us with adjourning the meeting at 2:58 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.